Check, check.
Mr. Mayor, counting down? Ten.
All right, so, welcome everyone to the... I'll work on that feedback. All right, are we good? That sounds better, okay. All right, welcome to tonight's special meeting on September 22nd, and we will call the meeting to order at 6 o'clock. You know, I noticed that the Pledge of Allegiance isn't on the... We don't have to do it for workshops, okay. But we do need to get a first and a second to adopt the agenda. So why don't we do that if we get a first and a second to adopt tonight's agenda?
Before we adopt the agenda. Ooh. Hate to do this, but... Okay, I did receive a few calls from members of the public who are concerned because there was a document that was added, that was posted online, kind of in short notice, just today. And I just think it's good, maybe if we check in with Tom just to confirm that adding something doesn't, you know, we're still okay to move forward, given that it was short notice. So I don't know if it's notice of the meeting or all of the documents, so...
Sure, all right, Tom. Can you just provide some guidance for the council in regards to the document that I had submitted to staff over the weekend?
Yes, I'm happy to. I also saw for the council's benefit, an email was forwarded, sorry. I turned my phone off. An email was forwarded earlier today raising the same question. I'm going to say around 3 o'clock. So I had a chance to also do some legal research. I'm not just answering off the top of my head. So what was posted today was the mayor's sort of script, personal script for how he would like to see the meeting go this evening and how he intends to proceed. That is not an agenda. There's nothing in it that proposes to move away from the post-agenda from 72 hours ago. So the agenda was posted properly 72 hours ago. The document, while detailed and perhaps unusual for the public, is not unusual for those of us working with cities and those representing cities. It is often the case that there are long notes that members keep to themselves for how they want to proceed in a meeting. Those are not public documents necessarily. The one today was posted in an abundance of caution for reasons we don't have to go into. Normally, we wouldn't have even posted it. So I see it as the mayor's detail about how he'd like to proceed in the meeting and not a new agenda, which is the question being raised. The other question, just so we're clear. If I'm wrong, the remedy here is that if an action is taken at a meeting where it was not properly agendized, okay? Then what's the consequence? The consequence is you have to come back and hear that action again and hear the whole hearing again, to the extent that's necessary. Usually, the public participates a little less than the second go-round. I don't think that's going to happen here, but that's usually the recourse. Two reasons on the record for why I don't think it's going to happen. One, I don't think there's a violation. And two, there's nothing in the agenda that requires council action. I read it as requiring or seeking council direction. So I don't think we have Brown Act violation. I don't think we've necessarily confused the public. And the available remedy is not going to be so great that the council needs to worry about it as to whether or not to hold tonight's meeting.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. Any questions for Tom?
I do have a question for Tom.
Okay.
When the... this email from the mayor went out, it talks about what we are going to do. And I think those are things that are really for the council to decide how we proceed after this meeting. And these are set out very specifically on what the intention of the mayor is in the way to conclude this meeting at a later date and have another meeting that the public is invited to weigh in on. And I think it does sort of overstep what the mayor should be doing on saying how we will conduct this meeting and its resolution.
Well, you know, in the resolution...
And I'm asking that to...
Oh, okay.
And a possible resolution. And so I'm wondering if, Tom, you looked at the last section of this email?
Which email, Councilmember O'Connell? Today's or last week's?
Today's.
Today's. Okay. I did look at that, yes.
Okay. As long as you looked at it, then that's fine.
There's one... there's a fine point that I'll make. I wasn't going to bring it up unless somebody asked, because it's a step away from the Brown Act. This is a special meeting. It can be postponed if a majority of the council wants it postponed. It's not a best practice to postpone when there's confusion, but it's also not a best practice to carry on a meeting if there's confusion. It's really... it's not the law. It's a judgment call for the council. Is there enough concern about the... any confusion that the council would prefer that this be put over a week or whatever the council's interest is? If a majority feel that way, you can move forward in that light. I'm not saying you should. I'm not saying you shouldn't. I just want to make you aware that it is never the case that a mayor in a non-charter city has the authority to dictate the pace of a meeting. They can try to keep it on track, which you've all done as mayor, right? Good luck when you're a mayor. And that is how I read the document. It's his plan for trying to keep things moving, but it doesn't tie anybody's hands. That's how I read it. Did I thoroughly confuse the council?
I'm just, you know... "The council will, the council will" is repeated over and over in this document instead of his wishes to try to say five-minute discussion, like a bullet point on what we're supposed to be doing. So again, that certainly is subject to your legal interpretation.
I will just say, if it said the council shall, I wouldn't be interpreting it the way I am. "Will" is something you guys have to agree on. I read through it a couple times, Councilmember O'Connell. I do not read it as... I've said it. I read this, and I have not spoken to the mayor about it. It came up this afternoon. I read it as his plan for the meeting, and he hopes it goes that way, but it's really up to the council as to whether it goes that way or not.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? That's right. Do you have a question for Tom?
I do have a question for Tom. Hey, Tom, so I should be looking at this document titled Flow Structure for the Brisbane City Council Workshop as a suggestion of how the meeting might go tonight. Is that a true statement?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
I understand it's confusing, but that... It's not even a close call in the law.
Okay, and just being the new guy here, of course, I've got... the number of questions I've got on the document are a lot, but I'm just... I'm not going to ask them now. But like, for example, it says, "The comment period for members of the public will be restricted to three minutes per person." Are we reintroducing the count-on timer for this meeting or is that an ongoing thing now?
That's a question for the... The mayor of Brisbane has two traditional authorities, and they're both limited. One is how long public comment will be. It does not have to be the same meeting to meeting. That can depend on agenda length and other factors like that. So that's really up to the mayor. If you guys disagree, you think it should be four or no limit or two, a majority can vote and say, "Mr. Mayor, we disagree with your discretion on this. We want it to be this many minutes," or no, no limit at all. Similarly, everything the mayor has laid out, there are about five minutes of everything else the council can reject and say, "Well, we're not going to proceed this way." Or you just don't proceed that way. You don't even have to vote. You just say, "Well, I'm not comfortable with the five minutes." It's really a vision for a meeting that I took as he was trying to get a whole lot done in a relatively short period of time.
Okay, okay. That's making more sense.
If it was mandating, I'd have a different view, but it's not.
Yeah, this council likes to talk, so I'm like, "Five minutes." It's pretty short. Okay. Then I just want another bit of feedback, and I just have to throw this out there. I received this document at 10:59 this morning, and so the request to have draft edits prepared before this workshop with a seven-hour advance notice, I think that's pushing it a little bit. But again, I understand that this document is nothing but a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Tom? Okay. All right, so, yeah, you know, the email that I did send out is just to help the council move through the items in an efficient manner. Nothing more than that. We've got a lot on the agenda, and, you know, I hope that we can get through all of it. Yeah, I guess maybe there were some words, you know, that... They do say "will," and, yeah, you know, I guess at the end, we'll deliberate and then provide potential next steps. So I hope that is fairly clear about, you know, there isn't any set thing that we're supposed to accomplish tonight. Just hopefully provide some guidance to staff, what we should do next. So if any councilmembers, you know, have disagreement for what I've laid out, if you want to do something different, I'm completely open to that. And if not, then I'll go through what I had emailed. And just to let you know, I mean, I emailed it because I wanted to share it with all of you. It wasn't that I, you know, I'm just going to just come here and just start going through it tonight. So, but I, you know, I should have sent it to staff earlier. So thank you for providing some grace for me this evening. So, all righty. So thank you, everyone, for attending tonight's meeting. And, you know, so I've laid out some guidelines that...
I'm sorry to interrupt. I think the council does need to approve an agenda. I don't think that that happened.
Oh, we didn't do that?
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, that's right, thank you. Okay, so...
Thank you, Jeremy.
Did someone... someone did make a motion. Terry, you made the motion to approve that?
No.
Okay, so I'll take a first and a second to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, yeah, so the, you know, the last time we had a workshop, we didn't have the... there wasn't a lot of structure, and I felt that, okay, if we have some structure tonight, it'll make it easier for all of us to get through the items that are before us. So I was planning to provide opening comments, but, you know, typically the mayor does the comments afterwards, and I can let other councilmembers provide comments on what they think is important for having the guidelines and what they hope to achieve. And then, once every councilmember has an opportunity to speak on it, then we would go through the document that Terry had proposed, the resolution. And what I'd like to do is read each section and then for us to talk about that section and provide feedback. And, you know, the items that are in the resolution, I think, should be items that we would consider in a final document or if we need to make edits or if we think they should just be taken out. We can do that, too. Then after having gone through the document, opening it up to the public and having the public comment on the document. And after we do that, have a break and then come back. Councilmember Davis and I had presented a value-based code of conduct last year, and I think it would be good to go over that document and see, are there items in it that we should consider in any final document that we want to endorse? And then, you know, allowing councilmembers to provide items that they think should be included in a document that we want to get behind. You know, there might be some items in the resolution that we might have a hard time trying to work through. And that's okay. And so perhaps those items that we have a hard time getting through, we put them to the side and then come back to them later in the meeting. And then after that, open it back up to the public, get the public input on items that they feel should be included, because really, this is a document that is not just for us, but we're public servants, and I think it'd be nice to have the public weigh in as well and then give next steps. So is the council okay with that process? Okay, seems good. So I could start with opening comments or I can open it up to the council to provide those opening comments that they would like to share with the public? Want to start calling? All right, thank you.
If you'll please excuse me, because I'm going to read this. Didn't memorize it. "Council guidelines were raised by mayors and councilmembers over the past four years. Without specific guidelines in place, councilmembers are not held to standards enumerating what authority or responsibilities they have. This has surfaced numerous times in recent years. And what if a councilmember assumes authority they don't have? What are the consequences? There's nothing in writing about that. Best practices, code of conduct, and guidelines are actually three distinctly different concepts, but have unfortunately been lumped together. After spending much time reviewing how other cities handle these concepts, I also learned that cities typically adopted them because there were problems or misunderstandings or malfeasance. The streamlined document submitted by Councilmember O'Connell memorializes the way the council has typically operated in recent times. That's all it is. It clearly states the authority and responsibilities of a councilmember and when they are mayor. It's a document that would serve well as a foundation. It could be expanded to address other topics in greater detail. I would suggest the council consider bringing this document back in the form of a resolution to be voted on at a council meeting. To think that we can resolve all the details warranted in best practices, code of conduct, and guidelines this evening is ambitious at best and guarantees weak results. To try and legislate respect, collegiality, and collaboration is an unrealistic deception. How about some reasonable and realistic rules and procedures, clarifications and definitions, and finally, consequences? This is what several councilmembers asked for several years ago. We've never gotten there. When I volunteered to tackle the three conceptual documents last year, the previous subcommittee that had worked on best practices took offense. We've also heard that we have councilmembers who don't want guardrails and want to do what they want to do. With this in mind, I'm not sure how we can ever produce a flawless document. It certainly won't have unanimous approval for every item. But compromise should allow us to produce something we can vote on as a resolution in the future. Tonight, it would be my hope we can discuss opinions, concepts, problems, and solutions. This workshop alone will not resolve what should be a very well-thought, carefully crafted process. There is no rush. There is no crisis. Let's do this right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mackin. Councilmember Kern.
Thank you so much. I will not be able to deliver my thoughts as eloquently as Councilmember Mackin. However, I will tell you, I'm excited to get this started. I did attend the July 18th, 2024 meeting last year in this room, where I was the first go-around that I had to listen to the council talk about best practices and a code of conduct. On October 3rd, 2024, a workshop was held in the... What do we call this, the meeting room back here? I was the only member of the public that attended in person, and a resolution was not received that night either on how to move forward. And this is just my background. I'm just going through this. I'm the new... I get to do these kind of things. And then on May 15th of this year, Councilmember O'Connell passed out a paper-only to the folks here, the councilmembers here, just a draft resolution that we might read through. I thought it was pretty good, pretty comprehensive, so I think that that was something that I've had in my hip pocket since May and something I've been thinking about. I think it's important to point out that a majority of cities in San Mateo County have a code of conduct. I, just this year, celebrated my 40th anniversary of entering the labor force. I've been paying social security now for 40 years. A majority of the places that I have worked, I have had to sign a code of conduct. It just goes without saying. I spent 16 years in the finance industry and in the insurance industry, and they're extremely strict about this and to the point where we're quizzed on it on an annual basis. So this is not something that's new to me, and I'm glad to see that a majority of our other cities have this. You know, if your parents, you probably at some point with your child, sat down with them and said, "We're going to put a plan in place in case the house catches fire. We're going to meet in a neighbor's house. This is your escape path," something like that. You don't start working on that crisis plan once the house is on fire. The same thing with car insurance. You don't buy car insurance after you have a car accident. This is all done in advance. So the importance of a document like this is it just helps have that safety net should something go wrong. Last week, I had the opportunity of sitting down with a councilmember for one of our sister cities. They had a situation that happened within the last few months where they had to censure one of their members. And they were extremely happy that they had a code of conduct that they could literally, the word was, "dust off" because they needed it in that situation to resolve, you know, whatever situation they felt they needed to resolve. Not supporting it, I'm not saying that what they did is right or wrong. I'm just saying they said the code of conduct was good. So with all that being said, I think tonight's going to be a pretty decent session for us to express our opinions. I also think, at the end of tonight, I like to always start a meeting by saying, "What is going to be the end product of this meeting?" And we don't need to have the Cadillac by the end of this meeting, but if we have got an outline of what we're at least looking for, we can start massaging that and maybe come back at a later date with something a little bit more formal and in place. But I think the discussion tonight is really going to help drive that. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kern. Councilmember Davis.
I feel like I've talked about this till I'm blue in the face. So I'm looking forward to saying a whole lot less this meeting and listening to the rest of you because I think Cliff and I have worked to try to come up with several iterations, and none of them seem to be quite right. So I'm looking forward to throwing the ball in someone else's court. I will say that it's really disturbed me to see the state that our country is in and where it's rapidly, things are rapidly devolving. And so I would hope that tonight we could keep in mind what's going on at the federal level in our government and let that lead our intention of how we are going to be different and hopefully show that at the local level, we can still get it right. So, yeah, that's pretty much all I have. I will say that I, I mean, ultimately, I think having something is important because in the event that there is an incident and the council takes an action, I think it protects, protects not only the offender because it's already been determined what the possible consequences are, and no one could argue whether those consequences are too harsh or not harsh enough. And it also protects the other councilmembers who are choosing to take that action with criticism from the public, who may say, "Oh, well, you're doing too much. You're not doing enough." Everything's been outlined, and everyone can agree on the steps that are going to happen. And I think it diminishes, it really protects everyone so that if there's a councilmember that does something and they may not be on good terms with somebody else, they may not be on good terms with the majority of the council, that they're not going to get a harsher punishment, and so on and so forth. So I think it really does... It really protects everyone in the end. So that's it for me.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Davis. Councilmember O'Connell.
I'm sort of scared to touch this. So just as a little bit of a preamble... You're not hearing me?
It's... the light is on.
Why don't you tap on that mic to see if it makes a sound? You'll be good.
Like I said, I'm scared to touch it. Is it... can you hear me? I've never had to get closer, and now I'm hearing the hum. When I get closer, it's like it wants to electrocute me. No, that's okay. Oh, now the light's out.
Well, I think we need to take a break because we've got some technical difficulties. So, Ingrid, if we can fix the mic. So Ingrid, if we can fix the mic.
So when I submitted this, the draft resolution for the council at the end of the meeting a few months ago, this was just a rough draft of what I had heard and what I thought roles were within the council. It wasn't an end-all, be-all for how everyone should act, and I thought that this document needed to be reviewed by the council, have legal weigh-in. But something in this vein as a resolution, we weren't getting into the weeds of a whole bunch of different concepts, whether it be best practices, code of conduct. This was really roles and responsibilities, and what those roles and responsibilities are. When people have asked, "Oh, what do you do as a council member?" This is sort of what I would say. Well, yes, when I was the mayor, it was my job to do this, this, and this, but it was ceremonial, and it serves at the will of the other council members. It's my job to run the meeting efficiently. It was my job, or the mayor's job, to do certain things, but it didn't give anyone any extra role and responsibility as a whole collectively to make decisions. And so that was what I was trying to surmise in this rough draft of a resolution. It wasn't trying to set up all the parameters of every situation, which is what a further document of best practices and code of conduct really is what you want to achieve. This is more of the primer, the looking at what is expected of you as a council member once you're elected. Doesn't mean you're going to do it right, doesn't mean you're going to do it wrong. It just is the basic framework of what a council member is. And so I look forward to going over it, and if someone has a comment, a question, a correction on what those roles are, I think that's fine. We should be able to discuss them just perfectly. And if we can get through that document alone, I would be happy with the outcome from this meeting. We may not get to the best practices and the code of conduct that are going to get much more subjective and have more connotations for interpretation and how that's going to play out. So that's my goal for this, this evening. And again, these aren't anybody's in particulars, just my wandering thoughts to begin with.
All right. Well, thank you, thank you for that, Councilmember O'Connell. All right. So I wrote down some comments, and I'll just read them.
Can't hear you, sorry.
Can you hear me now? Is that better? Okay, thank you for that. And if I don't project my voice out so you can hear it, definitely call me out again, please. Thank you. All right. So my goals for the workshop is that the council gives sound direction to staff to prepare a final document for council adoption that inspires the council to be great public servants. Since this is a document that will not only apply to this council, but potentially to future councils to come, I would hope we strive to be committed to evaluating the following guidelines when determining what will be included in the document. And so, and when I say, you know, what will be included in the document, I'm not exactly sure what final document we're gonna have. That will eventually come out through the council collaboration and also input from all of you. But here are four things that I think we should be mindful of as we're, you know, putting things kind of like into the soup. So language should be objective, so that interpretation is not in question. The intent should be clear, so as not to create potential misunderstandings. The document should be universal in substance, so that the goals and values can be applied to any body of government, and that they would ring true today and into the future. Language should not contradict what state law allows elected officials to do when performing the duties they feel are in the best interest of the public. And then, you know, this is something that I hope that we can do, you know, is to seek unanimous approval for every item that's included in the final document. Now, this last one will require compromise and respecting the opinions of one another. It's a goal, it doesn't have to be, but it's something that I hope that we can achieve to do. I believe the document will be stronger and have a greater impact on what it means to find common ground, if we're willing to be open and understanding each other's perspectives. You know, kind of honing in on what you were hoping to achieve, Madison. We have an opportunity to create a document that can be a shining example of democratic process, giving us a sense of pride and accomplishment that can be passed on to future generations of council members. So that's my commitment to my colleagues and to all of you. And so with that, let's, let's jump into the resolution that Terry has proposed. And so let me just pull up that. So what I'd like to do is read this, you know, each sentence and just ask council, "Does this work for you as something that we would consider putting into the mix?" And if there's any changes, please speak up, and if you thought that it shouldn't be in here, say that as well. So, "The role, responsibilities, and authority of the members of the city council in the city of Brisbane." And the first one is, "Council members shall be accountable to the citizens of Brisbane."
I think that's true.
Okay, we're all good with that? Okay. "Five individuals are elected to serve on the council and make decisions."
Again?
Pretty straightforward?
I think that's true.
Okay, good. "All members of the council have equal authority and equal votes." Think we're all good there? Okay, okay. So the next section is, "The city council is effective when?" And so the first one is, "Acting responsibly and accountable to each other." So does anybody have any questions about that?
Nope.
Okay, so I do have one suggestion, and that is the word "accountable to each other." I think we're definitely accountable to the citizens of Brisbane. They elect us to sit in these seats. I think perhaps maybe, just as a suggestion, acting responsibly, respectfully, and professionally to each other. Not so much being accountable to each other, but that we treat each other in a respectful, professional, and responsible manner.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think your substitution has a different connotation completely.
Okay. Well, that's good. Let's have that discussed.
I think accountable to each other recognizes the fact that what any one person on the council does affects the entire council and the whole city of Brisbane in our effectiveness to legislate.
So, "In accountable to each other," so is that, are you, to me, it can be subjective?
It's a very broad statement. Accountable is if, if I come in the room and I spray raid, it's going to affect everyone. If I go outside and turn off the lights, it's going to affect everyone. It's a very simple thing, just that whatever one person does is going to affect everyone else, and that we realize that. Everything has ripples.
Part of that in my intention is, you know, accountable is, you know, being present in a meeting, being prepared for a meeting, and that goes into mind whether it be here on the dais or to the public. You know, it's a general term. I don't think that it, it means we have to bow to everyone's wishes. It's just being accountable for your own actions, and that I believe is more of a legal term, is it not, Tom?
Sorry, trying to get the right connection. Accountable does have meaning in the law, but it's not consistent. In this context, it's probably going to be read by a court. I'd have to look at those cases, but I assume a court would say, "This just generally meant that we're going to be responsible to each other in our behavior." I think that's how it would be interpreted.
Okay, so should we, would you recommend leaving accountable out to each other? Just be acting responsible, responsibly to each other?
I think that's more defensible, yes. On the meeting point, Councilmember O'Connell, the word that came to mind when you were speaking was "prepared." "Council members shall come prepared," if that helps at all.
Okay, so that sentence would say acting responsibly and prepared?
And responsible.
And prepared.
I think prepared is like a whole other, like, that's a whole other line.
I agree. So.
And acting responsibly.
Okay, so adding respectfully and professionally, not to include that with responsibly? Or would that?
Well, that sort of comes in the next sentence.
Okay.
For purposes of record, I do not have a problem with it reading, "acting responsibly and accountable to each other," the end. I think that that's fine the way it is.
I thought I was fighting with it too, but.
I will take anything at this point.
Okay.
And this is where we're talking about being effective. This is when we're talking about how we're working together and we're communicating with each other here and in subcommittee meetings. It doesn't mean we have to be this way if we meet at the local restaurant.
So one, I mean, okay.
So Tom had suggested that we don't use it, but are you saying that we should do it? I mean.
I should clarify. I wasn't trying to put the word "prepared" in any particular place. I was just saying that's another word for what was said when it was described. As far as accountable versus responsible, if you want to get away from a term that the courts have interpreted 60 different ways, you'd go to responsible from accountable. That's all I was getting at.
Well, we had responsible and accountable.
That's fine.
It's fine.
Responding to the question about whether it's a legal term.
Okay.
If I may add, I think part of this also, what I sense in this, is that it states, "If we are accountable to the citizens of Brisbane, we're all duly elected." It says before that. "We all have equal authority and equal votes." This line kind of cements the fact that we are supposed to work together. We were all voted to work together. That's the accountability and responsibility, right there.
I think the thing that maybe as a holdup is like accountable, it's not clear. Like, you all have different interpretations of what that might mean, and that's where I think things get muddy, and that's when Cliff and I were working together on this document, not this one, but the other documents, we were trying to come up with things that was very clear, so that you couldn't have a disagreement later on about whether you were accountable or not accountable. And that's why in that document, it would say, "In practice, this is what it looks like." And so it says, you know, "This is the value," and then in practice, here are the examples of what that means. And, you know, maybe that's, I think, what's hanging up Cliff, is because we could all interpret what accountable means. Like, to me, it means if we all say we're going to appoint the mayor to vote for so-and-so at the league meetings, and he goes there and he votes for somebody else, well, that's not being accountable to the agreement that we had, and so then I, you know, that's how I think about it. And so clearly, we all kind of have different versions of what that means, and so is that going to hang us up? And then I, but then I also feel like maybe we're getting stuck in semantics, and I don't want to do that. I'll agree to anything. That's why I'm like, whatever you want me to do, I'll do it.
I don't want you to agree to anything.
I'll do it. If you guys, if it's important to you, great.
I think, oh, sorry. I was just going to say, I think you just illustrated another point, though, too, is that if the council meets and sets a policy, we want to feel like we're all upholding the policy. We're not going out of the council, talking to people, or meeting with other cities and not adhering to that policy statement. So it shows that accountability, that we are accountable to each other in that sense. Maybe there's another way to word it.
Well, you know, like in that sense, but there could be other times when, you know, maybe perhaps a council member might feel pressured to be accountable, because the majority of the council is expecting something, right? And so that, that's the kind of the rub where I have, I mean, I have no problem with being responsible to each other, and that makes sense to me. Is the word accountable, you know, if we can find a different word if needed?
Let's say that me as a representative on the emergency preparedness, whoever, went and did something that we weren't expecting to do because we wanted to vote for someone, and that was the direction it was given. And I said, "Well, I went into the meeting and I didn't vote for them because they came in and they were saying inappropriate things about how they were going to move forward, and so I'm going to be accountable to you and say, 'Gee, we said we were going to vote for whoever, and I didn't because of this.'" That's being accountable.
Yes.
That's giving your definition of why you did something. And so that's the context that I would look at it in, where we're acting responsibility, responsible, and we're also accountable for our actions towards everyone else, that we take ownership of what we do and maybe give you a reason why. And that's not saying that in codes of conduct, best practices, we don't address that. And again, if we want to leave the accountable out here to move forward, I'm happy to do that.
How about this? How about, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm struggling a lot with leaving out accountable here. So I'm going to go back to my great-grandpa days here. So he would say the definition of accountable is, "Do what you say and say what you do." And I'm relying on the four of you to do that with me. I cannot move forward without the word accountable in here.
So. Oh, I'm sorry.
And then I, can I just want to comment on one thing, Councilmember Davis here as well. So instead of dawn of time, and we'll start the dawn of time with the Bible. People interpret it, interpret every single document, every single thing that's written differently. If we're trying to move forward, and we're going to try to eliminate, you know, completely eliminate any sort of interpretations, every attorney would be out of business. So I feel like we're doing the right thing by reviewing this. Don't get me wrong. I'm, I feel very passionate about what we're doing, but we need to just keep in mind that anything in this document can be interpreted a bunch of different ways. So it's just something we have to keep in mind.
On page, if you don't mind, Cliff, on page 16, the document that Cliff and I worked on, one, the bullet point, third, second bullet point under honesty, integrity, says, "We take responsibility for actions even when it is uncomfortable to do so." And maybe, I'm just, maybe there needs to just be some kind of example there that helps illustrate, to me, that's what accountability is. You're taking responsibility for your actions, even if it's, you know, uncomfortable to do so, so.
I think that when we get into code of conduct, that we can address that there. This is just the foundational document, would be my opinion, of when somebody's going to get elected or has just been elected, and this is what the roles and responsibilities are. This is, this is just setting down the guidelines, in my opinion, of what is expected as a council member and/or mayor or mayor pro temp.
Yeah. I agree. You know, just thinking of like, you know, keeping accountability in there. Let me throw this out there and see if it's good with all you. You know, acting responsibility and accountable to the position of being a city council member. Right? So it isn't accountable. Right? So it isn't accountable to us, but actually it's being accountable to the actual position.
That's a different concept completely.
I'm fine with it as written. Not what you've proposed, Cliff, but what Terry proposed, like, for the sake of moving on, because we are like.
Yeah, I know. You're starting at the top here.
Can we put, maybe we should put that one in a parking lot.
Okay, let's put it in a parking lot.
As like an idea that we can add in.
Okay.
If, if I may, just, I know you want to park it, but just to put this concept out there, where accountability, I think is a concept that has a relationship to what you're holding somebody accountable to, perhaps. So if, if the phraseology is, we'll respect one another, the, the notion is that you're accountable to when you're not behaving that way. And then the council can decide whether or not that requires any further action or remedy or otherwise. But I don't know if that's helpful. That's what we were sort of chatting about over here.
That's what I was trying to get at. Thanks. So I was trying to come up with some kind of example.
Okay.
Illustrate what that means.
Well, I don't think examples belong in a resolution.
Right. When you get into other documents, code of conduct, best practices, that's where you explain these things in more detail. This is just the basic.
I think we're, we're trying to work out what we're planning to have. I, I think it's just very free flowing right now, and this is just.
It's a workshop.
Well, exactly, right? We're just putting it out there, seeing it. This language is something that we would consider in, in eventual final document. Okay, so park this one. Next one is demonstrate honesty and integrity in actions and statements.
Good.
Good, right? Maintain clear lines of communication.
What does that mean? That's vague to me.
Okay.
Like, what does that mean? I call you back the next day? I take your calls? What if I don't want to take your calls?
What about endeavor to maintain clear lines of communications? That makes it more subjective according to the circumstances.
What do you think, Beth, right?
We are effective if we maintain clear lines of communication. But if we want to take the word maintain out, that's fine.
Yeah.
Have.
Provide.
Have clear lines of communication. We can water it down if that's what you want.
Well, you know, I don't think it's a watering down. I think it's, you know, if a council member has a concern, we should listen that through and, and find a common ground. So. Do you want to change, maintain for a different word? You said endeavor, Councilmember O'Connell.
Is it clear lines of communication with each other? Is it clear lines of communication with the public?
All the way around, with staff as well. It's everything. And that could be explained later in another document. Best practices of communication are with some suggestions.
Can you just say with staff, the public, and one another?
I think you're getting into the detail that would be in the other documents.
I, I think what you stated is, is important to be put in there. Again, this isn't, you know, we don't know, we don't know what the final document's gonna be. Just can the statements be clear so no one has any, you know, misunderstandings? That, that's, that's what we're trying to do, trying to be really objective so that anyone can read it and it's pretty straightforward. So do, do you have a suggestion, Madison?
I just said maintain clear lines of communication with staff, the public, and one another. I.
Okay.
I don't know. I mean, I'm sorry, I'm just not a vague person on these kinds of things. I think like.
And you think I am.
It's like, I, it's so fluffy to me, and yeah, it could be interpreted a million ways, but I, if I, if I'm gonna agree to something, I want to know, like, if we have a rough meeting and you're calling me for the next two weeks and I don't really want to talk to you, you know, I might not pick up the phone. But if I'm here, I'm agreeing to have clear lines of communication. I want to know what that's, what it, what that means.
Through, through the chair, is this, if this is respect to each other, then it's about positive lines of communication? Maybe not clear. I'm tying it back to that, those issues, if that's the intent of the council.
Yeah, and you know, Madison, you bring up an interesting point. I mean, is, should this be on the dais? Or is this, is there like dais, you know, like protocol for us? You know, provide clear lines of communication when we're sitting here in a meeting? Or is, does it also mean outside of a meeting where you're getting, what you're getting to?
Or, well, can we, we could just say communicate respectfully.
I think that's, that's a good catchall.
I think you're, you're again losing the point of trying to keep communication open because it's not about communicate respectively, it's encouraging people to communicate with each other. Those are two different things.
Well, that's why I'm asking, like, to, to, I, I'm just asking for what, for detail about what that means. Like, if, if it's clear lines of communication with staff, the public, and one another, I don't know, I, I don't know.
I think, I think communicate respectfully is, it captures it all.
I think that really what this is looking at, and, and I don't think it really needs to be spelled out in the resolution body itself, is this is when you're acting as a council member. When you are acting as a council member, it doesn't mean after hours or anything else. This is the responsibility of when you're a city council member, and that doesn't necessarily mean when you walk out the door and you're on your personal dime. It does mean if you go to a public meeting and you're representing the city council, because that's when you're sort of on duty. It does mean when you're representing the city. It doesn't mean in your personal life, you've got to take every call from me or from anybody else. It's maintaining an open communication, and this is talking about when we're effective.
Yes.
It's not saying that we all have to be, you know, permanently on the phone to everyone in Brisbane or the county or the state or wherever. And I think we're trying to, to put too much in this section about when we're effective. Because of course, if we can talk to each other, we're more effective than if I say, I'm never gonna talk to Madison about this because she's just wrong. I mean, we're not gonna get anywhere if that's how we think about each other.
How about maintain open lines of communication?
Good, fine.
I can work with, I can work with open. I just, you know, I was like, what if we just flipped the word maintain on its head? And looked at the opposite and just talked that through for a second. So the opposite, that would be ignore, disregard, destroy, neglect, break, hurt, impair, injure. And I'm like, the opposite of that is the word open, I think. So openly communicate, what was your suggestion?
Have open and clear lines of communication?
Fine.
Okay.
Is staff capturing all this wonderful material?
We, we are to the extent that we can. We'll review the recording.
Got that, yeah. Okay, so put aside personal gain or agendas to work in concert with the entire body.
Good.
We're Team Blair's.
I know that. So this one I was, you know, thinking about, like, what if, what if you had a council, what, what if you had a resident who is having a hard time living in Brisbane? Because it's, the housing is so expensive. And they decide to run for council and run on a platform of, I, I want to promote affordable housing. And then they win a seat on, on, on the council. And then you have some council members don't, or a majority of the council doesn't want to do affordable housing. Well, is that, is that person then supposed to put it there? The thing that they ran on, the thing that they got elected on, to the side? I, I think, you know, that's something that, you know, I, I have some issue with this.
No, I, I, I don't think that, that is not my intent when I wrote it. Put aside personal gain is, I'm not intending to make money off building affordable housing or allowing a roller rink in Brisbane or anything else where I'm working for personal gain. Personal gain is very, I mean, I think that's addressed in, in, in our election law when you do things for personal gain.
Yeah.
It doesn't mean you can't have a list of things you want to accomplish or you'd like to see, it just can't be for your personal gain.
Yeah, right? And so, I mean.
Then you have to recuse yourself.
Well, you know, I mean, sometimes, you know, personal gain can be monetary. Sometimes it could be other types of personal gain, right? You, you want recognition or some, I mean, it just, to me, it's, it's, it's very subjective. And I, I, I mean, I think there's state law that, you know, that, that is really clear about what is personal gain and that. I, I'm, you know, this document is something that is gonna be passed on to the future and, right? And so I, I, you know, you don't want to see like some council ten years from now or fifteen years from now, u- using it and say, hey, you know, you're, you're, we don't like what you're, you, you're against like what, what we think is important. And so, but it seems like, you know, you're advocating for something that, you know, could potentially be interpreted as personal gain. So I, I totally get that you should not do anything where you're, you know, it's, you know, could pro quo, obviously. But I, I, it's just, if you're gonna make a document, it's gotta be airtight. And it's something like, you know, you're talking about, Madison, it shouldn't be squishy. It should be, you know, something that you, it has to be something that is airtight. It shouldn't be subjective.
So, Tom, do you have any comments on put aside personal gain or agendas to work in concert with the entire body as being squishy?
Personal gain I, I took as just a reference to the state laws on financial interests that you cannot, personal financial interests that you cannot act in your own behalf to further. So I do think that I took as just a reference to the state law, so I had no issue with that. The second, I really wasn't quite sure what it meant. So I, it's not in the law, but I think what you're saying is, as a council, is you're saying we want to be respectful to each other. I know you just said that, but I didn't know what it meant beyond that.
Okay.
Councilmember O'Connell, if I may, this is effectively a preamble. This is, you know, putting on my old hat, having written a lot of these things. This is to be inspiring. It's to set a vision and objective we all want to, to meet up and, and feel good that we, in doing it, and they, in doing it, hold the city proud. It is not, it is not intended to be actionable. Codes of conduct are not intended to be actionable by the state or a local attorney or sitting on the dais prosecuting one member versus the other. They're meant to be there to inspire. If they're meant to be legal, you find them in the law. And we have plenty of codes of conduct that apply to you all in California law.
So on, on this, on this, this paragraph where we're saying the city council's effective when, this is the aspirational part?
Yes.
Okay, fine. I'm good with it.
I'm good with it.
To me, it was clear.
How about this? Is effective when abiding by state law as it relates to personal gain? I, you know, I just, again, you know, to me, I think it can be interpreted as subjective.
That's, that's taking it to the lowest denominator. The lowest denominator is state law. So we could just write this whole document, act in accordance to state law, period. That's not what we're trying to do here.
I, I'm not sure what we're trying to do. I thought the, the, what we're trying to do is come up with a document that we can all get behind. And that is, is, as Tom had just mentioned, right, this, this is supposed to be aspirational. Something that we should, you know.
This section is, the, the rest of it where your duties are is not aspirational. Those are your duties.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I, I take this line as simply referencing, let's just admit, everybody has biases. Everybody may come to the council with things they want to accomplish. But when you get into deliberations on something, you're going to respect your colleagues, that they have a vote, and if the council doesn't go with you, that you respect that and just say, you know, you're gonna work in concert, even if you don't agree with it, if it looks like there's four or five people, they're all going in a certain direction, maybe two people go in another direction, that you're going to work in concert with them, even if you have some different ideas. And it's just simply expressing that is what it sounds like to me.
Could it, could you put, put aside personal gain or agendas to work in the best interest of Brisbane? In concert with the entire body, to me.
That's what it, that's what it says at the last, the last sentence, but put aside personal gain or agendas, and we could just leave it at that.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Leave out the, to work in concert with the entire body.
Okay.
Good.
What is, what is the final statement?
Put aside personal gain or agendas.
Period.
Period. Thank you. Okay.
So the next item is ensure multiple points of view are explored and given consideration.
Great.
I think we're good. Okay, foster collaboration and dialogue to achieve consensus. So I, I'm hoping someone can explain this one. So like, if, if we don't have consensus, are we not effective?
Well, three, two is consensus.
Yes. Working together. I mean, we're not changing, it's a three, two, or a four, one, or a five, all vote. You know, it's saying collaborate and talk to each other to come to that final conclusion.
So you can make a vote.
So you can vote. And we're talking about when we're effective. We're effective if we collaborate and talk to each other.
How about this? How about foster collaboration and dialogue when making decisions? Is that work?
Sure.
Okay.
Foster collaboration and dialogue to achieve consensus. Consensus, again, back to what Councilperson Davis said, is a three, two vote or a four, one vote.
Or a five, oh.
And you'd rather have making, when making decisions, if that makes Maryland's happy, I'm happy to change that wording. Doesn't change the meaning.
We could just have foster collaboration and dialogue, just not even when we're making decisions.
That's true.
Anytime.
Okay.
Yep.
That's, you got a point there.
So you want it just to say foster collaboration and dialogue?
I think I'm good with that.
How about the rest of the team?
Good? Yep.
I'm not in love with it.
Okay, great. Okay, the next one is acting unison when making decisions in the best interest for Brisbane. So so Terry, since this is your document, what, what, I'm trying to, you know, because we, we didn't get a chance to, you know, to talk about it, right? You know, because.
No, we haven't.
So what, what, what do you, what do you mean by that? You know, acting in unison.
We're talking about when the city council is effective. And when there's something we know needs to be done, we try to act in unison. It's, goes along with you and your little, your statement that you wrote, that you want everybody to be all on board and you'd love to have every decision we made a unified decision.
I, I don't think I said that, and I don't think I implied that in my document. But, so.
You said like, we should, we should all be unanimous.
Yeah, you did.
In, in the things that we put in here. That's, that's what I'm hopeful for, right? The, the things we put into the document.
Okay, well, you've said it many before that you wish that we would be more unified. But if you don't want to, we can just leave it as make the best decision or make decisions in the best interest. or make decisions in the best interest for Brisbane. We can leave the act in unison completely off. And we just make decisions in the best interest of Brisbane.
Okay, and so we're good with if, um, you know, some council members might think going in one way is in the best interest of Brisbane. And other council members might think doing this is in the best interest of Brisbane. Obviously, we don't have five, oh, votes all the time.
Right.
So, but each person is acting in the best interest of Brisbane as they see it?
Yep. So we don't need, we could leave that act in unison out, just say, make decisions in the best interest of Brisbane.
Amazing.
Okay.
This is just when we're being effective. This is not
Okay.
We don't have to do this all the time. It's just when we want to be effective.
Okay, so we're good with that. Frankie, I see, maybe you wanted to say something?
Uh, no, not, not in this particular one.
Okay, so moving on to the next one.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Mayor, if I may, on page eleven of our document, it's attachment three titled Response to Code by Councilmember Kern.
Yes.
I had three bullets that I added to the role of city council members in Brisbane, which would be in addition to the section that we're talking about now. It might be easiest if we just covered off on those at this time.
Okay, let's go for that. All right, uh, you got the floor, Councilmember Kern. So, uh, well, I, well, okay, let's, okay, I'll read it out. So, uh, our, uh, our complaint with all appi- applicable, applicable, compliant, that's right, compliant, sorry. Thank you for that. Uh, are compliant with all applicable federal, state, and local laws in the performance of their duties.
Very good.
Perfect.
Okay, all good there? Okay, uh, demonstrate respectful behavior toward, uh, other council members, city staff, and the public. This includes refraining from pub, from personal attacks, slanderous remarks, and abusive conduct. We all good with that? Good? Okay, good. Uh, are prepared for meetings by reviewing agenda items and relevant documents in advance.
So I, I would say that, um, you know, I like all three of these statements. I think the, um, the roles responsibilities, where it's, you know, shall be accountable for citizens, elected to serve, an equal vote. They should be compli, we add in that first bullet point, the compliant and applicable, uh, state and federal laws.
Yeah.
And, um, the, um, prepared for meetings should, I, I think that the, the last two should be in the effective area.
Yeah.
So I think the first one should be in the roles. The second two should be in the effective.
Agree.
Okay.
Good.
I can live with that. Okay. All right, and just for purposes of statement, uh, Councilmember O'Connell passed out a paper copy, which we're reviewing here today. Um, Assistant City Manager Christina Fernandez, uh, made a PDF copy of it for me and sent it to me via email. I loaded the document into Adobe Acrobat, uh, did not change any of the content of Councilperson O'Connell's document, simply cleaned up the margins and made it fit on one and a half pages instead of three. And then I added my comments to it. So this is the original document that you submitted, just in a tighter format.
It just looks nicer. You have better word document, oh, somebody has better word document skills than me.
It's Adobe, yes.
Adobe, Word, computer skills.
Okay, so, um, move on to the next item. In the resolution, uh, every council, oh, see, any council member may suggest an item to be considered for a future, future council meeting.
Through the chair, a reminder that this item is agendized for a, a future meeting, uh, very likely the next meeting. Um, so, um, if you'd like to separate this specific portion out and have that discussion separately, we've got that teed up for you already.
Yeah, and that, that was the suggestion I was gonna make, since we agreed to agendize, um, how we, uh, create a protocol for, uh, getting items on the agenda. And then whatever we decide, then that's what we decide.
So if we're doing that in the next couple of weeks at our next meeting, then we can wait and see if this goes into this document. This time we can shelve it out of this document until we see what, um, the outcome of that other meeting is.
That's staff's suggestion.
That is the, the intent.
We should put Councilmember Kern's statement in there, though, if we're gonna, I don't know if that goes at the end? Might go at the end of this.
I think it is. I think that would be at the end, the resolution part, that it's a living document.
Yeah.
Um, I think that's with resolutions, aren't they, uh, Tom, wouldn't they all always be considered that? Or no?
Considered a living document?
They could, will be reviewed and updated periodically?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Yes.
Okay, so it, it might be adding it in there, but it would be done anyway? Or could be done anyway?
It, it could be done anyway and invariably, very few things go unchanged for decades. Usually something spurs a reason, and they revise whatever's on the books in terms of the position of the council, as well as what's in the codebooks. It's not unusual at all to have them revisited. So you're, you're fine assuming it may be revisited in the future.
Okay, so moving on to the next item, and I'm sure we will get through this one really fast.
Can we just go back to that prior discussion about the resolution being intended to be a living document? I didn't hear whether or not we decided we're keeping it in or we're removing it.
It'll be at the end.
It'll be at the end, it's being included?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
But it doesn't need to be, but, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, okay, so the next item is, uh, the mayor, and annually, a mayor is designated by and serves at the pleasure of the council. So, um,
That is a fact. Annually, a mayor is designated by and serves at the pleasure of the council. Correct?
Well, I think, uh, annually, a mayor is designated by the council. Uh, you know, do we need to add and serves at the pleasure?
Yes.
So why?
Because it's not, it adds the, um,
Because they're voted in by the council?
Pardon?
Because they're voted in, but they're appointed by the council. They're voted in by the council, so that, just like if we are appointing, right, someone to the planning commission, then they serve at the pleasure of the council, because they've been appointed by the council. That's how I read it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there a problem with that, Tom?
No, you can say it or you can be silent. Either way, uh, the mayor's office is, uh, primarily ceremonial and it cannot bind the rest of the council. So if the council decides to remove a mayor for whatever reason, it can do so, whether you say it or not.
Yeah, I mean, I think if there's, uh, definitely misconduct, there should be, uh, remedy for the council to remove the mayor. No question about that. Um, I, you know, to me, I think the stating it in the document, um, I, I don't, you know, I don't think it sends the right message. You know, a lot of, you know, and it's true that the council does appoint. But then when we appoint that person, we trust that person to do the job properly.
We certainly hope so, yeah.
Right, and, uh, but we know that, that different council members, you know, serve in that capacity i- in, in different ways. And, um, they should be allowed to serve in the, in, in a respectful and professional manner to the best of their abilities. And, uh, do so without worrying about how potential, um, you know, feelings or negativity that other council members might have. So to me, it's just, it should be, you're appointed by the council and, and leave it at that.
I don't, I believe that's in our, all of our appointments, that the council makes to any committee, commission, probably to employment.
Won't this get spelled out like at a later, and it, won't we dive into this in
Well, I think that, I think when we go into code of conduct or that, that, that could be where that's addressed. But it is a fact that they serve at the pleasure of the council, and I don't see a reason to leave it out.
Well, how about this? Um, if we're gonna dive into other parts of the mayor and the duties, perhaps, um, we should, we should park that one and move on to the other items.
Move on to what other items? I don't follow you.
Other items that are under the mayor?
The duties of the mayor.
Okay.
We can come back to it if you want, I mean,
Okay, let's do that. If we're gonna make it, uh, you know, one, one item. Okay, the duties of the mayor are the following. Shares council meetings. Don't see any problem there. Signs, signs documents on behalf of the city. Uh, appears on behalf, uh, appears on behalf on the city at ceremony.
Of the city.
On the, yeah, okay.
Of the city, yes.
Yeah, all right. Issues pro- proclamation, serves as delegate of the city at official or governmental events and conferences. You know, um, could, you know, how do you all feel about making that one sentence? You know, that, um, uh, some of the duties of the mayor include signing documents on behalf of the city, appear at ceremonial functions on behalf of the city, issue proclamations, serve as a delegate at official or government, governmental events on behalf of the city. And then works with the city manager to determine the agenda for council meetings.
So you just want it to be a run-on paragraph of this, 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 this? I mean,
Yeah, are we gonna leave it, you know, separate it? I mean, it just seems kind of choppy, you know, this way.
I think that mayor and mo, mayor pro tem, the Adobe document that staff prepared, it, it makes all the words, it's chairing council meetings instead of chair.
Okay.
Signing documents, representing instead of represent. I'm not sure we need all the inges in there, but if that's more proper, fine. But I think the bullet point, um, is in a lot of our resolution-type documents. Um, and I would think that at least that shows what, if you're showing this document to someone who's interested in being a city council member or a mayor, they know what they might be getting into. So I think that it's clearer having it bullet pointed. And, you know, whether it says chairing or chairs, doesn't really matter to me. Whatever is the cleanest language and the most modern is fine with me.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm all for whatever's, uh, making it cleaner.
Councilmember Kern, that seems fine.
I, I agree.
Although, are we talking about that whole section?
Yeah.
So I would just say that I think that we should take out works with the city manager to determine meeting agendas. Because we're gonna be reevaluating how we bring forward items, and I think that the mayor should be included in that.
Agree.
Yep, I agree.
Okay. All right.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm backing up because we have mayor and mayor pro tem under one bullet point, which I think I, I'm not real happy with that change. Because
So why?
So it says the council designates a mayor and mayor pro tem from among its members each year, right? So that's true.
Right.
The mayor's duties include, the mayor pro tem performs the mayor's duties if the mayor is absent or unable to attend. The designation of pro tem does not mean they will be selected, oh.
As mayor the following year.
As mayor the following year, so, uh,
So that's, that's fine if we're gonna put it together and lump it in there. Um, and then I would certainly, well, we'll go back to the ones thing that he didn't, that, uh, the mayor did not want.
It's just structured better, I think, here.
I think the way that, uh, that Councilmember Kern, uh, working with staff, put it together in that one section is, is clear.
And do you think that part of the mayor and mayor pro, because we're, so we want to leave in working with the city manager to determine meeting agendas?
No.
No, we're gonna take that out.
That is something that they do.
But not until after our next meeting, and we'll revisit this after our next meeting.
Because we are, we're talking about how items get on the agenda.
Right, but, I mean, whether that happens or not, I mean, I, I can, we can leave it out for the moment, but the current
Oh, you're saying ultimately is, okay.
When there's an agenda, they review it with, with staff, the mayor does, and says, yeah, or maybe that's too much, or, um, you know, we're not gonna have time for this. They're not necessarily saying, these are all the things I want on the agenda. That's not
Yes.
what this is saying. It's that you're working with them.
But that doesn't come across like that.
I think we should hold it
With city manager to determine.
I think we should hold it until we determine what to do about the agenda.
Okay. I mean, I never, well, I'm, I'm, I'm Okay, so both sentences are gonna be pulled, then?
Just that one.
Okay, so it's the, so the
Just the one sentence.
Okay, so the designation of, of pro tem does not mean they will be selected as mayor the following year.
That's true.
That, 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 that's true with how, what we have set up right now.
It's a current resolution, yes.
Uh, well, I don't, I don't know if it's, uh, if, I think we have guidelines, but I don't think we have, well, maybe we have a current resolution.
We do have a resolution.
Can we use the language?
The resolution isn't binding.
Can we say, I think it's really nice the way it's worded, maybe we can, it's a big packet. Let me see, trying to find it. Hmm, do you see anyone? Uh, whenever possible, the city council shall select the then-current mayor pro tem as the next mayor. That's a little bit different. That's our current resolution, a little bit different than how this is worded.
Yes.
I don't know.
Well, it, but it, it really does say that it, it says whenever possible, but it, this, uh, and we could leave the designation of pro tem does not mean they will be selected as mayor, because it's already in another document.
Could you just take that phrase and put it there? The phrase that's on the books?
You could, you could just do that.
You could?
Yes.
That's what, that's what I'm saying.
You could say when possible, mayor pro tem.
When, whenever possible, the city council shall select the then-current mayor pro tem as the next mayor. Or no, I don't know.
I think, I think that particular, I think that particular item doesn't really need to belong in this section. Right, we're just talking about what are the duties of the mayor? And now we're talking about the mayor pro tem might not be selected as the mayor. That doesn't make sense to have it there. It should be somewhere else.
Okay, fine.
Okay.
So then we're, we're basically revisiting, um, the, the mayor pro tem section on my, my paperwork has already been addressed in mayor and mayor pro tem section.
It, it has.
So it's duplication.
It is, so we can get rid of that because it's already been addressed.
Yeah, it was combined by Frank.
Okay, so, uh, designated authority, are we ready to move on to that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, uh, from time to time, the council may decide to designate the mayor or a specific council member with temporary special authority.
That's if you're attending the council of cities meeting and the mayor's not, and we say, sure, Frank can vote at this. Or it's a council of cities dinner, or one of those things.
Would you mind just reading it from, because I think as a paragraph, actually, just reading that whole paragraph
Okay.
makes a lot of sense on page twelve. I think it's easier, instead of going line by line, just looking at the whole thing.
Oh, okay, got it. And it's, okay, from Councilmember Kern. Got it, okay. The city council may at ti, may at times grant temporary special authority to the mayor or a special council member. In such cases, the council meets with the, the designee to discuss expectations and guidelines. The authority might be granted to allow the designee to act as a spokesperson for a city, for official city position, or as a representative in negotiations. When acting in this capacity, When acting in this capacity, the designee must be careful to reflect the official position of the council, not their personal opinions. So that, that is, that's excellent.
Yeah, that's great.
And that, that's what should be in there, so then. Let's see. Do we need to then have the item where, where it talks about examples of situations? Cause I know we talked about we can't like always have examples, we shouldn't have examples in this, can we just have that paragraph?
I, I think that if someone's designated authority, we would know when that's been given. I don't think that that needs to be. Lined out.
Okay, okay, well, let me read it then. So examples of situations where a designee might be employed to act as a spokesperson for the city on matters that the council has taken, or on matters that the council has taken an official position. To act as a representative for the city in negotiations conveying the official position of the council, not in a decision-making capacity, but to engage in dialogue and bringing information back to the full council for discussion directly and possibly a vote.
It's pretty similar to the paragraph.
I, I think that, that councilmember Kern's version, the one thing that we don't have in there is bringing the information back to the full council.
Yeah.
That, that accountability, sorry, I'm using the word, that, that should be in there. It's kind of an expectation, but I think it needs to be stated somehow.
I'm happy to add that in to Frank, uh, councilmember Kern's.
Okay.
They will engage in dialogue and bring information back to the full council for discussion, direction, and possibly a vote.
Alright, everyone good with what Madison said?
Yep.
Next item is, at all times, the designee must choose words and statements carefully to reflect the official position of the council and not personal opinions or viewpoints.
I think that's important if.
I think this is critical.
We're giving someone.
Yeah.
Okay, so then councilmember non-designated authority.
Wait, I don't think that's in there, wait, wait, yeah, it is, when acting.
It is.
Yeah, okay, sorry. It's there, my bad.
Okay.
And I'm happy with Frank's rewording.
Okay, great. Alright, so then the only thing that we're adding is the, the wordage that Madison had provided to that paragraph. Okay. Okay, so in the non-designated authority, I'm gonna read, uh, the paragraph that was provided by councilmember Kern. Any councilmember has a legal right to meet with individuals or other entities. However, they should not imply that they represent the official position of the city unless they have been formally designated with that authority. Councilmembers should always be clear about whether their comments reflect the official city position or a personal viewpoint. The town's mayor or mayor pro tem can be interpreted as carrying more authority. So those individuals must be extra cautious not to give that impression. Councilmembers should also avoid speculating on how they might vote on a matter that has not yet come before the council as comments taken out of context could have serious legal consequences.
Good.
I'm good with that.
Okay. You know, I, I, I do wanna get some clarity from, uh, the city attorney. So, um, in, in the last sentence, Tom, I mean, I, I, I agree that, um, the councilmembers should avoid speculate on how they might vote on a matter that has not yet come before the council. But if there are items. That are legislative in matter, say something in regards to the general plan or to zoning. Can councilmembers. State how they feel about, um, concerns that they might have of, uh, an item that where, uh, a general plan amendment might be, uh, be asked or a zoning change that might, um, have potential negative impact, can they express those concerns while still not being, um, biased to the project?
A lot there, um, I know you didn't attend that. Okay, so taking the last point first. Council elected officials who are going to act at a quasi-judicial capacity, fancy way of saying when you're deciding whether or not to issue or to enter into a specific plan or to issue a permit, things like that, whether it's that you're giving direction to a commission or you, the council, are acting on a hearing of your own, that's quasi-judicial. You cannot have bias in that, going into that process. California, like the nation and like the globe, has changed the definition of bias as a practical matter. All you have to say to indicate that you don't have bias to satisfy a court is, you know, I'm leaning against this, but I haven't heard the whole case. Or it hasn't come before the council yet, so I need to hear what else they have to say, but I admit I'm leaning against it. That, that has nothing to do with this document, that's a whole different thing. Um, so I wanna be clear, that's different. As far as on a legislative matter, when the, when the city has, um, made up its mind as a three-two vote, four-one vote, five-o vote. I don't know if I could find it. I'm sure I could not find a legal case, but I bet you I could find an ethics case at the FPPC that says if you are not comfortable conveying the city's decision without adding in what you think should have been done or how it could have been done differently, cause this is legislative, the decision's been made, you're not going into hearing, you've made it. I would just say the councilmember who's being asked to do that should say, I'm not comfortable doing that and have somebody else represent the council at that particular meeting. Cause that, at that point, a decision's been made, so it's either silence, passing comment, you know, I, I wasn't thrilled with the outcome, but here's where we are. But if we, if you go beyond that, you're really undermining the decision.
Got it, no, that, that makes sense. Okay, so under the non-designated authority, are we good with that paragraph?
I'm good with it.
Yep.
Okay. Make sure we're on that here. Okay. So I believe we're at the every councilmember should mean, should exercise caution in meetings? I think that's where we are? Okay, so every councilmember should exercise caution in meetings and be very clear about whether comments represent the official city position or a personal viewpoint.
I thought we already talked.
That's non-designated authority, right?
Yeah, I thought we already decided on the, on the non-designated authority.
Okay, so, okay, I wasn't sure if, if, if all these items got covered in that.
I think they do.
We did everything except the media.
Okay.
Except the media?
Yeah, the media statement.
Okay, 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 so councilmembers should be especially careful in dealing with the media? We're good? The last page of the resolution?
Of my paperwork.
Okay, so that's not in Frank's then, right?
It's not in Frank's.
Before you go on, the sentence right before that is not in Frank's either. Comments taken out of context or indicating bias can have unfortunate, serious.
Yes, they are, they're in Frank's.
It does.
They're just worded differently, slightly differently.
Okay, yes, got it, just different wording, that's why I didn't see it, okay, thank you.
Dealing with the media. Yeah.
So what do you, what do you think, Madison?
And I think that, well, go ahead.
I almost wanted to put like the media developers and other elected officials. To me, that's, it's not just the media that has kind of high stakes. You know, um, developers for sure.
What you said, media developers, and what was the last thing you said?
And other officials.
And other elected officials.
Oh, and other, and other elected officials.
You know, I agree with that because I think that, you know, just when, you know, especially when it's an on-the-record kind of, um, situation or maybe even off-the-record, that it can have ramifications.
Can I add something else? You could have people who are not media, they're not developers, they're not elected, but they are public officials. Fine, who aren't elected, so.
Boy, I, you know, I, are we sure we wanna do that? You know, um, you know, Assemblymember Pappin, right, she's our representative. But should we have, you know, something that, that basically says, uh, we should be careful in dealing with her or Senator Josh Becker?
Maybe we should just be, we should be especially sensitive in our communications with media developers and other elected officials.
I like careful better than sensitive.
Thoughtful?
Sensitive is a little.
Too gentle for you?
It's a little too gentle, I think caution and careful are a little stronger.
Oh, maybe the word caution is better.
Exercise caution.
So, okay, but again, that's, you know, I, I like, I, I kinda like what you're saying about being thoughtful. I mean, you know, people are gonna read this, so again, should we be cautious with, you know, people that we're supposed to be partnering with?
But you know, I mean, you know what the stakes are, right, like.
When we, when we had meetings with Jerry, with Jerry Hill.
Yeah.
Yeah?
We really worked to make sure that the councilmembers that went to speak with him during those delicate times, that they were very cautious, and that was designated authority.
He has, and we, and we have a great relationship with Jerry, right? Like, we have no problem talking to Jerry about all kinds of things, he's our representative, just like how Gina would be in that.
Really think about that, how to handle that situation.
Yeah, no.
To not say the wrong thing. And that would be sort of under the non-designated authority where if you're just having a one-off with Jerry Hill and he's no longer so part of the equation, so we can sort of use him as an example. You know, it's something where you'd wanna be cautious, yes. At that time, he was our designated elected official. But we still should be cautious and thoughtful in dealing with media developers and other officials.
Okay, so I'm just, I, I get that particular situation, that makes sense, there was, that was very high stakes, we're talking about, you know, figuring out, you know, what we're gonna put on the ballot for Mr. JJ. Again, Assemblymember Pappin's coming to Brisbane, I think on the tenth, so should I be, should I be cautious in, in, in my dealings with her? I, I think being mindful, you know, thoughtful, okay, that makes sense. I, I don't think, you know, we should apply that to, to each other.
I think you're taking it to an extreme, Mr. Mayor, I, I think.
Words are words.
The caution, if it's not applicable, then you are exercising caution. But things taken out of context that can be mentioned, even to someone who you consider a friend or on your side as an elected official, sometimes you have to be a little guarded with how much information you give out. And it's, it's no affront to the person, it's just exercising caution, it's, it's prudent, it's being prudent and cautious.
I, I, I get that, you know, I mean, like these, I, you know, and I appreciate the, you know, the cautiousness that, that is exhibited in the document. I mean, we're also adults too, and I think we're all responsible.
Well, it depends, I would think it depends if the meeting with the official is in your official capacity as mayor or as a councilmember or in a more personal type of meeting arrangement and whether you've been designated to, to work with someone on a specific thing and gotten the approval of the council to work on a specific thing. You know, if you're just, um, you know, so when you're, you're using, um, the meeting with Pappin as something that's going to be happening and it's not that you have a script that we've given you or said, you can talk about this, but not that, but you're meeting with her, hosting her, but not as, and I'm assuming you're doing it as mayor and having, you know, that interaction. But if you're not doing it with a designated authority, I think, yes, then you have caution.
There's no harm in being cautious, I mean.
I think the word you're looking for is circumspect.
I don't even, what is?
So, um, so it's the word, right? You know, so if it's written that way, that's what it's gonna state, right, and words matter. And so, um, you know, if, if, again, is there a different word that can be used that conveys what you're trying to achieve? Which is, you know, you should be.
Careful, I think that's good.
Careful, right?
Careful is the word we got right here.
The word that's in there, and I think that it's good. I think we should add it with developers and other officials.
Yes, I agree.
I mean, especially if you're dealing with it on non-designated authority or, um, non-designated authority. You're on your own out there, speaking to me or to someone else, you should be cautious, even if you're talking to me.
Those are loud sayings, Terry.
The word dealing, maybe the word we're looking for is working, working with instead of dealing with.
Well, sometimes you're dealing with the media, you're not working.
Yeah, you're not working.
Interactions?
Interacting.
That works, that works.
When interact, uh, when interacting.
With the media developers or other officials.
Yes.
Okay.
We're almost there, you guys.
We are, no, we're getting through the document and I think in a timely manner, so.
I, I think you need to say public and or elected officials. Cause again, there's people who are not elected.
No, we said, what did?
Oh, well, then that.
Media developers and other officials.
Media developers, public and elected officials, is that?
Well, we're talking about being especially careful, I, I think that.
Other officials.
As, as a, an elected, we all, I think, try to temper our conversations with anybody we're having.
Is other officials, is that fine?
Well, what's?
I would just put officials.
Official, okay, public officials, how's that?
Fine.
I don't care.
Yeah, alright.
Public officials.
Moving on.
Do we need to add suppliers to that list?
No, it, cause nobody's making a deal.
We don't have the authority.
Got it.
Okay, um, offenses, so, okay, so it's council, let's see. Councilmember Kern had something on this.
Yes, right when my printer was running out of ink.
Yeah, okay. Handling misconduct, so I'm gonna read, um, what councilmember Kern has.
That's fine.
Worked with staff. Okay, allegations of councilmember misconduct should be reported to the mayor, who should ask the city manager and city attorney to investigate. If the mayor is the subject of the complaint, the matter should be referred to the mayor pro tem. Offenses may be addressed privately with the offending councilmember or brought before the full council. The council may reprimand or formally censure offenders, which may include losing committee assignments. The guiding principles for the council are respect for one another, for different opinions, the democratic process, and for the community. I'm just curious, Terry, you know, you have this paragraph that's in different font and it's bolded. Were you intending to that be part of the offenses section? Or is that your kind of closing statement?
I, I think there basically was re, again, this was just a rough, rough document.
Ah, yes.
And, um, so I'm perfectly happy with the handling misconduct that, uh, councilmember Kern has, has put into a more succinct method.
Yeah.
Okay, so. Okay, so, so what I'm getting at, though, is the, so, I mean, this is the handling of misconduct, but the last sentence is, the guiding principles for the council are respect for one another, for different opinions, the democratic process, and for the community. So, is, is that part of what should be in misconduct?
Well, that, I, I think that it does tie into the misconduct. I think that we haven't, this document does not address what constitutes misconduct. At this point, it's just saying, if you think I did something wrong, you should go, just like sexual misconduct or any misconduct.
That, that, no, that makes sense.
You would go to a higher authority and ask for an opinion, and then that can come back. We haven't gotten into the nuts and bolts of what constitutes misconduct. It just gives the option of what could be used, if there's misconduct, that is agreed upon by whoever. And that the guiding principles is respect, opinion, differing opinions, and for the democratic process. So, I think that just ties in that it's not for, to be vindictive. It's not meant to be, um, something to go against, um, having a differing idea. That it is more of another type of misconduct that's being talked about here because we respect having differing ideas and opinions and ways to get to the goal line, is my thought for this. And I think that what Frank rewrote, you know, wordsmith, I think, works very well in this.
Yeah, no, I, I, I like the way that it's written here. I, I was just questioning the last part. Does that, does that make sense to include it?
Well, if you wanted to, you could do a new paragraph, a new paragraph, new bold, you know, where the guiding principles of the council are to respect for one another, for different opinions, and for the democratic process. I would actually put a space there and bring that down as a separate line.
Yeah.
Because it doesn't necessarily go with misconduct. It is the final wordsmith that we're doing of why we're doing this document. And then we can add, um, the line about the resolution's intended to be a living document.
Good.
And then we just need to go back and review, um, a couple things that...
Yeah, we have some more, yeah, no, no, for sure. So, um, is the council good with, uh, taking that last sentence, moving it, uh, to a separate paragraph and combining it with, uh, your, um, living document language?
Yes.
You good with that, Frank?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so, we have gotten through, uh, the document. So now I want to open it up to the, for public comment, you know, on this document. And so if there are any members of the public, uh, who want to speak, I don't have any, uh, you know, slips, but you can raise your hand if you want to, um, provide, uh, comments. Anybody in the audience? Okay, by all means, come on up.
Do we want to address the parking lot first?
We have to.
Oh, yeah, that's a good point.
Okay.
I didn't hear what she said.
She was saying that we have some items that we've put in the parking lot. And are we gonna go back?
Right, no, I, I...
To those.
Yeah, you'll have an opportunity to talk about those things too. But if there's something that maybe that we didn't, uh, that, that we finalized, that we've given direction on, or something that you want to add to this document, or if you want to talk about the items that we parked to, you can mention it too. Whatever you feel you, you would like to do in regards to what was discussed in the resolution.
Do I turn this on? Oh, it's already...
You're good.
This is my second in-person meeting. I live on the ridge, my name is Sheila Bradley. And I really appreciate witnessing this very difficult, um, group project. I've spent my career in corporate, and these are difficult issues to handle in a kind of a committee environment. And so I really, uh, respect and appreciate how you've all worked together. Mr. Mayor, I read your comments in the document that was a rebuttal. And of big concern for me is a continuing perspective of avoiding accountability to the team or to the council and acting individually. And if you'd like, I can give you some examples of what gave me that impression.
That is totally fine.
Okay. Council members should not be restricted on advocating for items they feel will make Brisbane better. And if council members are elected one by one, but they're entrusted to serve together, true governance depends on shared authority. And advocacy matters, but when it ignores council consensus, it undermines the council and its role as a deliberative body. So, there's risks in acting independent, and I feel good about some of the things that you've agreed to, to avoid fragmenting the governments of the council, so. Another example is, I agree that council members are accountable to the public, but to one another, I'm not so sure. And that really gave me a lot of concern for the potential of you acting independent from the council. And so I'm interested in that parking lot item of being accountable.
Got it.
Because if misconduct goes unchecked, then the daily working relationships erode, and you're not able to effectively serve the public. You went on to say council members should not be discouraged from expressing their views publicly, even if others on the council disagree. And yet, free speech is vital. But if you are acting from a position of authority and not identifying that I, as a personal citizen, have these ideas, then, um, you're not working as a collective group. And then you went on to say, whatever we decide to put forth, every item should be agreed to by every member of the council. And I'm wondering how that would play out with a majority, or whether it would be a blocker for the effectiveness of this meeting. And so far, it hasn't been, so I'm happy to witness that. You went on to say that stating that the mayor serves at the pleasure of the council politicizes the position because it indicates that council members need to act or be a certain way in order to receive favor for being appointed to the position. And is that in the parking lot still, whether that language is being used? So, I just, um, this is just an uneducated opinion. But if the mayor's role is framed as an entitlement rather than a responsibility, then the council loses the flexibility to appoint the right leader at the right moment to determining the effectiveness of the group. So, thank you for hearing my comments.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you for, uh, coming up and speaking. Okay, any other member of the public?
We also have a raised hand, too.
Okay.
Ooh, two.
I, I see that, so I'll, I'll get them too. Thank you, Ingrid.
First of all, I really appreciate, um, the comments that Sheila made. I thought they were very salient and, and respectful, but also very important. I had some questions, um, I loved what you said, Frank, about do what you say and say what you do. Personal gain includes recognition in many ways, and I've seen examples of that in the past. And self-aggrandizement and, uh, you know, currying public favor in, in certain roles. And, and that's where I feel like sometimes it's, it's not very appropriate, so. I liked that we put that in there. The mayor serves at the pleasure of the council. It's, it sounds weird to use the word pleasure, but that's a phrase. And it means that at any time, if the mayor isn't performing the way that the council, you know, especially like running meetings or doing other things that are, you know, that, that the council does have the ability to remove the mayor from being the mayor. And I, I think that that is one of the things that's really integral, i- important in being a general law city and not, uh, a city where the mayor is elected. And that has stood as well in, over, over the last, what, fifty-something, sixty years that we've been a city. And the other thing is, um, in the, the last section, when you were talking about misconduct and, um, and having a meeting about it or bringing it to the full council, you also might want to decide whether it's appropriate to bring it to the public or just within the council. Because we had a tremendous amount of swirl and conflict and miscommunication across the board when we did have an incident in the last few years. And, um, and finally, the laundry was aired in a small, uh, meeting that wasn't actually televised. But it was really, you, you need to decide that because if there is misconduct, and then the person who was accused of misconduct makes personal statements all over the place, denying or, or saying, I didn't do it, or whatever. And the other council members seem like they're the wicked witches of the West for having censured this person and not chosen them, uh, for a, a role that he wanted. It, it created a tremendous amount of negative energy in this town that really was not worth it. So, this is why I think it's really important to kind of outline, are you gonna have these behind enclosed sessions? At what point do you bring it to the public to myth-bust what's, what the word on the street is? And I know it's hard because it is a small town, but reputations are made and broken, and, um, people are elected or not elected, and it's very, very hurtful when things are not clear for all of the public to see what's happening. So, and, and then in, in terms of cautious and all of that, I really do think the word that you're looking for is circumspect. I'm sorry, I, I said it out loud, but, um, circumspect is an adjective meaning wary and unwilling to take risks. And the example is, the officials were very circumspect, circumspect in their, uh, statements. And it, it's a word that kind of, I think, covers what you're looking for. Because caution may sound like you don't want to share, but, um, circumspect, being wary but being conscious of what you're saying, I think is really the right word to use there. Because I hope you're all circumspect when you speak to other officials in other cities and, and that type of thing. So it really does have an impact. I've seen what's happened at the state level. And you were all, uh, the, the, not you all. The Brisbane City Council was running very scared for a while about what the state would bring down on us in their wrath over, um, housing in the Baylands. So, I do think circumspect is, is the word. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. All right, um, Chris, I see that you have your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. I really appreciate Sheila's comments. She said much better than I ever could many of the things that I was hoping to say. And I want to respect the tenacity of several members on the council who are really, really trying hard to make sure we get a good product here. I, I, frankly, Mary Lenz, I, I saw some of your resistance to come, some of these statements, and I found myself going, what on earth does he want to be able to do that's in violation of a statement like act responsibly and are accountable to each other? I, I, I just found myself bewildered by the resistance, and it didn't leave a good taste. And your acknowledgement that what's important to you is recognition was very telling, and so I'm glad that that's out in the public. Thank you.
All right, tha- thank you for that, Chris. All right, anyone else out in the public? See some people, uh, online, out in the audience? All right, so, oh, Anthony.
Hey, everybody. I mean, first of all, I just wanted to say, I think, you know, this, this process seemed to go much better than I was expecting it to. I was, you know, really kind of heartened to see everybody working through it. And, um, you know, so that's, that was, that was good to see. You know, there are a few spots, um, where, um, you know, in specific language, I really did kind of have trouble with it myself. You know, the, right, accountable to each other thing, first thing that popped into my head, for example, was, you know, held to account, that, you know, the, when, when terms are very broad, right? It can be, there's a lot of room for potential misinterpretation. The personal gain thing to personal financial gain may be the more exact phrasing, but, um, anyway, I, I, I think you, you covered a lot of, you know, the sort of misgivings that I had, the, um, you know, with it, but, you know, um, maybe I'll just focus in on one thing since we have the, the three-minute time limit there. I think the big one for me still is the, I, I struggle with the idea that the mayor of, the, the, the role of mayor is symbolic. If it's symbolic, then it seems to me the selection process, a simple rotation is really the only fair way to approach it. If a ceremonial position carries no power or no dissuade policy, then it shouldn't matter who serves. And it does feel as though, to me, sort of blocking someone from that role for arbitrary or unclear reasons ends up feeling like it invites unnecessary drama and undermines public trust. Makes it, looks as though the position is being wielded as reward or punishment, which, which just doesn't feel right. You know, and it just feels to me, if, if the role is symbolic, is in fact symbolic, then it shouldn't matter if the feeling is though it's not just symbolic and it goes beyond that, then maybe that's the thing that needs to be scrutinized, not the process. Right, and the other, you know, the other point I, I wanted to bring up was, um, council members feeling free to advocate for what they believe will make Brisbane better. You know, I, I would hate to think that any, any individual council member, you know, because of the way this document or any other document is written, would be reticent to, you know, in any way to express what they thought would help make Brisbane better. I would hate to think that there's any kind of internal pressure, you know, to do the right thing or say the right thing or be in consensus all the time. Even, you know, I, I would hope that anyone here would, would feel free at any point to, um, you know, express what they think is gonna make Brisbane better and help everyone, help the community. Kind of no matter what, you know? I mean, I, ultimately, I think, you know, speaking for myself as a voter, I don't want a silent cabal of people bobbing their heads and agreeing all the time on what they think is best for me. I want to hear from each of you, especially when you're in disagreement, because that's how I understand your values and truly appreciate really your leadership. You know, so, um, anyway, I, um, yeah. Do you think there's maybe a lot more work to be done? But, um, my, my hat goes off to all of you, and I, I look forward to more meetings like this.
Thank you, Anthony. All right, um, Lion Linda Detmer. Hey, Linda.
Hello, thank you for allowing me to speak. I've been watching, um, and I am very grateful for, um, has been said by Sheila and Chris. And I'm also, a, a lot of the things that have been said, I wondered why you, Mr. Mayor, were so picky about the wording, and it didn't make sense to me. The last gentleman that spoke doesn't realize that you broke the Brown Act or that, and that was the reason you weren't in the rotation. There's a lot there, and I don't trust you. I, I think that... I think that you need to just kind of calm down and remember that, you know, I've been, it's not the council, but I was on Complete Streets for thirteen years. And when you're the chair, and essentially that's what you are, you lead the meeting. You're a worker among workers. You're not the boss. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Linda. All right, anyone else? Okay, so, we're going to take a little break?
We want to talk about the parking lot items.
Could I make a comment?
I thought we could just bring those back after the break.
Oh, okay.
Could I make a comment first?
Yeah, sure.
Just addressing the comment about a cabal of thought. Each of us has been on the four-to-one end of a vote, where maybe we felt passionately about something, and it came to a vote, and our vote didn't win. And it's not a win or lose. I shouldn't even use that term. I have never sensed a pressure to be in a group think at all, on this council or as a planning commissioner, never. It's more been, one day you're with the group that prevails, the next day you're with the group that didn't prevail, and that's part of the job. And you accept that. And if you can't accept that, you shouldn't be sitting here at all. Very simple. But I have never, ever felt pressured that I had to do a group think. I think it's more important, if the council has a stance, that we're careful how we speak about that publicly. We may disagree, but that is the policy then. And as far as if each of us have different thoughts on what's best for Brisbane, I think every one of us do. That's not unusual either. And in talking to constituents, we talk about that. And one of the reasons we talk to constituents is, we may have an idea, but we want to solicit their input. So, it's not as if we can't do that. We do that all the time as well.
All right, so.
I have a question.
Okay.
This just came, this came up from Michelle's comment. And I'm looking at your, it's kind of hard, because this is almost like an agenda when we have this other agenda. But it says that after the break, we're going to talk about value-based code of conduct, which is the document you and I worked on. But there's another document, I mean, there's several documents that we've worked on. But the other one is draft procedures for removing a mayor and moving council members on the mayoral rotational list, which is, I think, talks about like daylighting things. And so I'm wondering if that's something that we're intending, like, we have value-based code of conduct, we have best practices, we have consequences for mayor and council member misconduct. And I'm just curious, like, are we intending to talk about all those documents? Are we just?
If the council wants to.
Okay.
I would actually move that we not do that. Until getting your email in the late afternoon today, Mr. Mayor, and had I not been apprised by another council member that you sent it, I wouldn't have even seen it. And there's lots of work I would have done to prep for best practices code of conduct, but I was never privy to the fact that we were going to go through this with a fine-tooth comb tonight. So I've not even had the opportunity to come up with additional ideas that I might want included. And I'm not sure that the public was understanding that either. So I would actually prefer that we continue the other items to another meeting, give the public time to review those, put some different ideas. If Councilmember Kern or anyone else wants to put forth other ideas, then the public has a chance to see those, instead of sitting here in the real time of a meeting and trying to digest it. It's awfully hard to digest it when you're not seeing it in writing.
Yeah, you know, all the items are in the packet, so they're all available to the public. I sent the email out, just, is just kind of a.
Structure.
What is, you know, a structure, just what I was thinking in the flow of the meeting would be. But it is really up to the council to decide the items that it wants to discuss. I'm giving, you know, in working with the city manager, you know, I wanted to make sure that the council and the public had all the information that they felt would help make a better overall decision in these variety of things, and that's why it's there. So, it's eight thirteen. I'd like to take a break, and then come back in ten minutes or so, fifteen minutes, and then address some of the other items that are in our packet, and then get council direction for next steps forward.
I'll make a motion to take a ten-minute break.
Thank you. Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, all is in favor, aye.
Aye.
So, the next item up is Attachment 1, it's Value-Based Code of Conduct. And this was a document that Councilmember Davis and I worked on.
So I thought we were gonna do the stuff in the parking lot.
We could do that, or we can...
Personally, I think that seeing the time that we're at 8:30, we've been at this for two and a half hours. I think if we go back and go through the document, do the things that are in the parking lot, and, and...
Okay, okay.
Be, call that done for the evening, and we come back to visit the other stuff.
Sounds good.
At the next time we do it.
Okay, fair enough. Okay.
I wonder if the staff would like us to sort of go through the whole document? Or, I mean, really quickly for changes, or do you have those?
I think between the three of us, we've captured the notes.
Yeah, it's on video too, so they can just review the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have lots of notes.
Okay, so, the first item that we had in the parking lot was the first item under the Council, the City Council's effective when acting responsibly and accountable to each other. And, you know, I mean, I, again, I don't wanna, I don't wanna like give the impression that I'm not wanting to be a team player, you know, or that accountability, to me accountability just seems subjective. And so, if we could find a different word, then that seemed like the right thing to do. Because whatever document we have, it should, it should be tight. So, but again, if the four of you think that it's fine, then, you know, then it'll stay. But I would hope that, you know, if we said acting responsibly, and working together in a collegial manner, that, that, that would suffice.
I think we, personally, I think we sort of talked about the collegiality later in the document a little bit, acting responsible and accountably, and we don't have to put "to each other."
I would prefer that. That sounds good.
We could leave it with that. It still has the word accountable or accountability in it, and it, but it leaves it where you're not trying to be accountable necessarily to us. It is maybe more to the public.
Absolutely.
However you feel, or that council member feels they should be accountable. Would that be...
You know, that, that would work for me.
I think acting with responsibility and accountability is the...
Sure.
How you phrase it.
That's...
Could you repeat that?
Acting with responsibility and accountability.
Period.
Okay, then, the other item is the, the annual, annually, a mayor is designated by and serves at the pleasure of the council.
I'm pretty stuck on that. I would like it to be in there because that is what it is, and that's when, how, when we interview other appointees, it's, you're not hearing me? I said, I'm sort of stuck on leaving, serves at the pleasure of the mayor in, or the pleasure of the council in that phrase. I really think it needs to be there because it is how we do things, and it, it adds a layer of protection to that phrase.
You know, if, if, if the mayor serves at the pleasure of the council, and there were subjective guidelines for how we elect, or how we appoint the mayor, then I would be good with that. So, if we're gonna have another meeting, and we'll be talking about how the mayor is appointed, because right now we have these guidelines, but they're, they're subjective.
We have, we have, not guidelines, we have a resolution that says how we elect the mayor, and I think it's perfectly good. It was voted on and was unanimous by the council that voted on it. And I believe that that is the proper way to elect a mayor, or appoint a mayor, excuse me, from the council. And I think that it being, it's not always a matter of rotation, it's not a matter of right, and it's not a matter of who's might not be popular at the time. There was clear reasons why it didn't happen, and we have it, you know, in there that we try to appoint the mayor pro tem. One time, I didn't have it be me because it was gonna be a bad year for me to do it. And I didn't, and the first time, I didn't think I was ready to be the mayor because of where I was in my learning curve of being on the council. So, it shouldn't always be a formulaic thing. It's who's going to be the best person in that moment to be the mayor, and that should be, that's how we have it written. We have that in a resolution form, and I think that that needs to stay the way it is.
So, we are discussing all these items.
Yeah.
Obviously, you know, we have some time, you know, constrained, so I mean, we could stay here all night, of course. I know no one wants to do that, and we've talked about bringing some items back. And so, I would like for us to bring the item back, and we'll just, we'll go through it because it's in our packet. To, so, I mean, you've given your reason why you think that what we have is good. And I, and I have a disagreement with that.
That's okay.
And it is okay, right? And we should have those disagreements, and then, so when we, when we have that disagreement, we should be able to talk about it on the dais. And that's, and so that's what I'm suggesting, that we just bring it back, not tonight. Let's not talk about it tonight, but just bring it back. I, you know, because I could be good with that statement, but I would like for us to have the discussion about, you know, what, what seems fair.
Well, let's, why don't...
It is how it is currently.
It is how it is currently.
Can we leave it unless, until, you know, if it changes, then we could update it. But it, it is how it is currently, so I think...
It is how it is, exactly.
I, I would, personally, I'd really like to nail down as much as we can in this informal setting, as we can of this document, and not have all this pending things that we need to come back and rehash again. I mean, we could, I think that if we have language that we are waffling on as a group, that's one thing. If we have four people or three people that want that in the document, then we should make that decision now so we can give direction to staff.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that. What I would like for us to have is the discussion so that we can talk about the process for how the mayor is eventually appointed. Right now, we do have some guidelines, we have that resolution. But we have a different council, and we should have the discussion. And if, if the way that we currently have it after the discussion that we would put on a future agenda, if that's the way that we still want to keep it, then we'll do it that way.
But...
If I may, I'm sorry. I think we're mixing apples and oranges.
We are.
For the document before the council at the moment, whether it says commissioners serve at the pleasure of the council, or committee members, or the mayor, the law's the law. Somebody only holds that office and those offices at the pleasure of the city council. Period. Doesn't matter what you say. It's in state law. Whether you want a reminder to the public, or don't want a reminder, totally up to you. But that's separate from what, what I'm hearing. The other discussion is about the process by which a mayor is selected, and whether you change that. That, that's very different from what I'm describing now.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm saying is, don't mislead, you don't want to mislead somebody about the state of the law. So either be consistently silent, or be consistently using the exact same phrase. But it has nothing to do with a process about how you will select a mayor.
And I think that's a separate... I think that's a separate process that we need to address separately, and that may take six or eight months or a year to get to.
With that, I think that this document, I got, has got my green light as it stands with the adjustments outlined to staff. And I would be comfortable turning it over to you to bring back to us for a final draft.
With the serves at the pleasure of council?
Yeah, well, you know, Tom says that is the law.
Yeah.
Right? And if, and we have the decision, right, we have the choice. We can leave it in, or we can put it in, you know, leave it out, or put it in. That, that's up to us, right? We don't have to state it. But if we want to state it, then, then that's what we would do.
I think it makes it clearer to people who are reading this to say, what is my duties if I get elected to this position? And this is what we're trying to be, is to be clear about what the duties, the roles, and the responsibilities of a council member are here. Not best practices, not code of conduct, but the role. And that's what this resolution is intending to do, in my opinion, is to bring that forward as what the role is. And I think that that should be in the document, and...
It is, right? The, we've listed what those roles are, and...
No, the pleasure of the council, I think, should be listed in the document. Because that explains it to someone who's reading this, saying, well, what, what is, what would be my role if I was elected to this position?
Or even in somebody who's just a resident, they ask us all the time, well, what does the mayor do? Boom, and this is where you send them.
He serves at the pleasure of the council, and he, they do this.
Okay.
It kind of mirrors the same thing, that, that is the same language in all the committee-commission guidelines. They all say that.
The alternative would just be to take it out? There isn't really anything else, there's no other language you could use.
That's what I'm saying, it's, it's a choice, right? You could just say that annually, a mayor is designated by the council. That's a true statement. Adding serves at the pleasure of the council, you know, is, is another layer. But we know that, that, that is true. That is by, by law.
But not everyone would know that's true without reading this.
I think intending to take it out, I mean, taking it out, I think, what's the reason to take it out if it's true? Like, it would be to maybe...
Abs, it, it's to muddy the waters.
So, you know, some might feel that it muddies the waters, and by taking it out, and I could see others saying, you know, feeling that it muddies waters by leaving it in. And again, is this one of those things that you, you, for interpretation? But Tom has said that it's...
I have to argue that. I'm so sorry, Mayor.
That, no, I...
This does not muddy...
That's okay.
This statement does not muddy waters. This statement, it clarifies fact.
It, well, you're right, it does clarify fact.
Yeah, this is not...
It clarifies fact. I'm, what I'm talking about is for members of the public, right? So, but I am okay with that. I'm okay, you know, so, it isn't like I'm gonna die on the sword for this thing. I'm just expressing an opinion, and that's why, you know, we sit on the dais here and have discussions. And we're gonna have differences of, of opinions and, and different perspectives. And, and, you know, we get out there, and we knock on doors, and, you know, and talk to folks, and, and that's part of the democratic process. And so, I'm all in favor of whatever improves the democratic process and gets our public more involved with coming to meetings and advocating for the things that they want. And so, but I also, I think it's important for, for the public to know where we stand on things too, even if they might be, you know, different, a different perspective than what the council thinks. And that's okay.
Well, as Clark Conway used to say, I know how to count to three. And I feel like that's, uh...
I, I'm sensing that, absolutely.
So, given the lateness of the hour.
Okay, so, I think we've addressed all the parked items, and so, it's 8:45. We have definitely some items that we need to come back to, and I think we will re-agendize the things that we didn't get to. You know, the item that we're moving forward is, okay, I'll get you. Is, you know, this is like a study session, right? So this isn't like the final document. We're just putting forth a document that is gonna be in draft form, is gonna come back to us, and we'll have whatever discussion that we might need to have, and then, you know, make a decision about putting it into, you know, adopting it. If that's the pleasure of the council.
Right.
Okay.
Just to make sure that I understand, so, staff is gonna take all of the notes and feedback that, the discussion that we had here tonight. They're gonna return a document to us. Will the document be provided to the council to get a nod before it gets moved to an agenda, or will it move to agenda, and then we have a discussion of the draft? How does that work?
Through, through the chair, the former.
Okay.
Yeah, the council would need to take a look at the document as we drafted it, based on your comments, and then you approve it and move from there.
Thank you so much.
Do you need a motion?
No.
Okay.
Righty. So... Karen, come on up. We're gonna open it up to, for final public comment, and if y'all, whoever wants to speak, by all means, come on up. Okay.
Just to be argumentative. So, at the pleasure of the city council, has been there forever. And that is the law as it stands today. And I think where the confusion might be with at least one of you on the council right now is that the rotation of the mayor, which will be in your next study session, is a, for some people in town, no matter what. And I think you need to be thinking very succinctly about what that actually means, and why we would have at the pleasure of the council, and not just no matter what. Because we really, really need to be discussing publicly why you would want to pass someone over as mayor. So, what happened in the past never happens again. I think that is really, really important for everybody on this council to understand, I think that is really, really important for everybody on this council to understand and embrace, so it doesn't happen again. And my second point of bitching for the evening is, could you please not put something on the agenda for the next study session that's five minutes before there is a meeting? And half the council didn't even know the second part of what was added to your agenda this afternoon was even there. I think you all need to have plenty of time to discuss and deliberate, well, not deliberate, to discuss and think amongst yourselves, you know, what does this document, that was really quite lengthy, mean before you come to a city council meeting, or discussion, whatever we want to call it? And so, I was not impressed to see this document come up so late, and there was no reason for it to come up late. And no one knew about it, and that's wrong. That is not transparent to our constituents. So, I'm complaining. There you go, I'm done.
Thank you, Karen. Appreciate it. All right.
How many hours have we spent discussing the rotation of mayor in the last five years? Those are hours we can't get back in our lives, and we still keep coming up with the same answer, which is, "We've got it right," okay? And we just wasted another half an hour of my life discussing it yet again, when we, we have something that works. And like Clark said, I can count to three, and I don't know why we keep bringing it up, and why we're beating this dead horse. Let's just move on from it. We have so many other, much more important things to discuss, really. And I don't even want to go into all the history and all the people who got passed over and why. Because I know that, because I lived through it multiple times, and it just, I should have left a half an hour ago.
Thank you.
So, does the draft contain that the mayor serves at the pleasure of the council?
Yes.
And that's all agreed? Okay, thank you.
All right. Let's see, so, anyone else in the audience? Anyone at home, online? Okay, so, anyone raise their hand? So, thank you so much for attending, and I thought it was a good discussion, and, you know, that's the democratic process. So, enjoy the rest of your evening, and we'll see you at the next meeting in October. Thank you very much.